See, we're live, guys.
Thank you very much. And regrets from Erin. She's not going to join us for the rest of the meeting. Yeah, but she just sent her regret.
Really delayed that comes.
We are live now.
I'll call it. Just turn this on for input to the picture.
All right, we'll call for the regular board meeting of May the 17th to order at 6:30. And we have regrets this evening from trustee Campbell and trustee Evan. I will do roll calls for the rest of us that are here so that people that are joining the livestream know who we all are. So, area one.
Madam Lehman.
Area two.
Agent Scott Moncrief.
Area three, Nicole Gillis. Area four is Ida, and she sent her regrets tonight. Area five, Erin has sent her regret. Other area five.
Bill Snow.
And Helen Gilbert. So we have quorum. I'd like to acknowledge that today's board meeting is being held within the traditional territory of the Dunedin Ba and Treaty Eight. The agenda was previously circulated. Are there any additions to the agenda for our regular meeting? Seeing no additions, can I please have a mover and a seconder for the agenda? Moved by Nicole, seconded by David. All in favor? All right, we do not have any presentations or delegations this evening. We'll start with trustee Gillis' celebrations.
Nothing, nothing new to report, really. I, yeah, nothing. I did go on a field trip with some Hudson Hope kids that came home late a few weeks ago as more of a parent, yeah, obviously. As a parent, always a nice day out there. That's about it.
Vice Chair Lehman.
I attended a Sue PAC meeting, which is always good to get feedback. Attended the PAC meeting at Clearview. There were some questions and concerns about vaccine. And I attended the labor management meeting. It was good to hear that overall, things are running very smoothly.
All right, trustee Scott Moncrief.
I've been in contact with all my administrators. Everything's running as well as can be expected. A little bit stressful and anxious time of year for most teachers. But overall, they're handling it quite well. The vaccine seems to be calming some of them down. So that helps. Overall, very good.
Thank you. Trustee Snow.
I made a couple of phone calls and messages to a couple of principals and stopped in to see Brandon High School and see how it was going there. Other than that, it's been fairly quiet.
This is good.
Good.
Always good. For myself, I've attended PAC meetings at the four schools that I'm days on tour and highlighted and asked people to complete our budget survey. I participated in one Northeast Roundtable, but there wasn't anything really to bring back that was relevant. I did judge classroom speeches at Ann Roberts Young. And I would like to thank very much trustee Gillis, trustee Scott Moncrief, and trustee Snow for stepping up to judge the Ann Roberts Young speech contest for them. They'll be very appreciative of that. Last week, I attended the SLS Conference for Women in Leadership that was organized locally. It had a number of people, including but also people from far away. And some of the focus was on building self-awareness, leadership skills, self-motivation, and positive growth mindset. There was one individual who had a history in law enforcement who was talking about how to make yourself presentable and confident and trustworthy. And the importance of Zoom, looking at the camera if you have a Zoom meeting and eye contact. So there were some interesting things to be picked up. There was 250-plus participants. I would like to acknowledge that some of those were our students. There were students, and there were some staff as well, but students from North East Presbytue and Hudson Hope attended. It was done on the Hoover app. And all of the conference participants have the opportunity to continue to talk after the conference. And what I thought was really neat for our students to see was everybody was there with a list of the organization that they belong to and their occupation and what they did. And especially for young women, there was people on that conference that aren't in traditional women's roles. And so I thought it was really good for our students to be able to be exposed to some of those kinds of things. I did attend the public budget consultation meeting in the evening, and we didn't have a lot of people out, but it was interesting and it was done. I would like to acknowledge the creativity of the Burt Bowes PAC who are working very hard with that school staff right now to do school leaving things for the grade nines that are moving on. And they're trying to do a video hug. They've given the grade nines an opportunity to send a five to 15-second video, and they've given them three prompts. One is, "As though you were leaving a message on COVID-19's voicemail, this is saying thanks for making my last year of middle school so much more stressful than it needed to be." Or, "Using your best reporter voice, introduce yourself 10 years in the future and where you are reporting from in your future career." And if you were at prom, what would you be wearing? What song would you dance to? Or your favorite memory of Burt Bowes? And they're going to compile them, if they got enough of them, and put them into a video for all of the students. So it just speaks to the creativity and desire. Mom Marie School's very excited that they have flower beds going, not flower beds, garden beds going in. They're adding raspberries, so they're very excited about that. And I put this up here because I'm playing in schools doing ready, set, learn, which speaks to my heart. But it was just really neat for me to be in the Heather Hannaford art space. I started in the gym, which is a lovely place to do ready, set, learn and play, and moved to the Heather Hannaford art space for the craft. And most of the craft would have met with Heather's approval. It wouldn't probably have been totally as free-form as Heather would have liked. But there was one little boy that went home, and he loved Bingo Dobbles. And I know that was going to be his favorite one at that house. But it's a wonderful space. It's got lots of different uses. And there's lots of room in it to do things. And it was really nice, after having moved tables in schools for years to do things. Those tables fold and roll. And we rolled them from one space to the next. So the flexibility of furniture and space, it was really nice to offer in. And I just want to let you know that I've been asked to record a message on behalf of the board for the North East grads. So if you have things that are important to be said, send them my way, and I will incorporate them. Moving on to 5.0, minutes of the regular board meeting of April the 19th, which is pages six to 11 in your agenda package. You have a moment to look at those. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by David, seconded by Bill. Are there any errors or omissions in those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Carry. Business arising from the minutes, partner group meetings update. I did reach out to Chad and Linda Dolan from the other two school districts. And they have the concept that the meeting around COVID recovery and where our districts are at would be a good idea. One of the things that Chad responded was, he said, "Having a large Zoom meeting with just a round table is probably not as effective." They would like an idea of what particular agenda topics we would like discussed. And I said I would grab that, and then I'll circulate that both to Chad and Linda. And then what we need to do is come up with a date for this, the two or three dates in June that might work for everybody, and then we'll float them and see how many people we can get. Nicole?
Any possibility that this can be put off till fall when we can meet in person?
Well, the things we did at our last meeting, Nicole, is we looked at all the meetings that we haven't been able to have and we set the priorities.
Yeah.
And the concept was the COVID recovery, we're all going to be kind of in the same boat on that. And that it wouldn't hurt to have a bit of a regional talk on that. And that that was probably more important to us in this point than contact with MLAs, because we'd already had that at NIB. And so based on that conversation, I did do the reach out. And the other organization that it was felt was important to have some contact with was Northern Lights.
Yeah, I was on that. I think I zoomed for that meeting, so I took your.
Sorry, Nicole.
Yeah, okay.
So that, 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 so what are some of the things, if we were to host a meeting like that, that we should be talking about? From staff or trustee's perspective?
Well, I guess we should just, we could each start with, like, I'd be interested to know if those districts have seen a decline in enrollment. Like, especially after the mask mandate, you know, like with all the different regulations, if they see much of a change throughout the school year. Although I don't know what finding that out is going to help me with. You know, like honestly.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Curiosity.
Yeah. So I don't know if it's just a meeting to feel like we've met and have some, because it's nice to have a relationship. I just, that's what I feel you don't get on the Zoom.
Yeah.
It's much harder. If that's all it's about, then that's my thought. But if there's other stuff to talk about, then.
I guess one of the questions is, you know, what are some of their plans around, you know, looking at what COVID impacts? You know, what are the learning impacts they think at this point are going to be for them?
Yeah, I guess, like, asking them as well, like, so one of the things we really have liked, I think, and that admins like, is the daytime custodial. So that's a budget issue, of course, but it'll be interesting to see if those school districts have found things that they had to do this year.
Silver lining.
Yeah, silver lining, the things that they will hopefully continue on, that we haven't thought of either, that we might end up out to.
Yeah, that's a really good.
You know, I'm thinking, yeah, I've rolled my curiosity, but who knows? For all we know is Dawson has an awesome program on how to encourage parents with other kids that we could learn from.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't know, right?
So those are some of the things. Silver lining, I think, is really important. One of the other things that, that, you know, comes to mind is the concept of any worries or fears. You know, what worries and fears you have coming out of the pandemic moving into, it moving into the next school year. Is there anything more specific that staff would like to know, Stephen?
Well, I mean, some of the things you just touched on are helpful to us. From a governance perspective, it might be also what sort of things have percolated for them in their community of different stakeholders and parents and that sort of thing.
Yeah, because we relatively haven't had a lot of parent outcry with the masks and then there's that one. But, you know, it'd be interesting to know if they've dealt with a bigger onslaught or.
Or how have you consulted?
Yeah.
With, with parent groups, you know, because we, you know, we need to do that fairly effectively here.
We've done it fairly effectively with D-PAC. And I mean, Stephen heard before D-PAC that the BCTF was raising concerns about us needing to move to a hybrid model in the South East and the North East. Then I picked it up on, and I monitor, right? So.
They're plugged in.
They're plugged in, yeah. Yeah, because one of them responded, yeah, I think that's probably a really important thing for us to talk about. We're not sure we're ever going to be out of it, so we haven't talked about it. What are we going to do when it ends?
The question to talk about is, like, it will end. Like, I think it's going to end with the vaccination and the herd immunity. But I also don't think, well, maybe in some of our prayers, but this won't be the last pandemic.
Yeah.
But I do think they're going to come.
What's the running for the next pandemic?
Yeah, like, what would you do differently next time? Or, yeah, I'm sure we'll all handle it much differently. But I do think we'll see another one in our lifetime.
Depends on how old we are.
Yeah. Stephen won't. You missed the earlier.
I'm with you. And I'm okay with that.
Been there, done that, don't want to do it again.
Even, Helen, maybe a little, little conversation about, because we don't, they're saying it's going to be back to normal for us here.
Yeah.
But the other side of the border, we have no idea, kind of thing. So odds are, you know, hopefully we'll be able to cross the border and do stuff. But I mean, if we're not, you know, we're going to have to support each other for extracurricular stuff too, more. Because they won't be able to go to Peace River and Beaver Lodge and stuff like that. I mean, if they still want to do play stuff in that, a Hudson Hope, you know, will have to have the opportunities to go to Tumbler Ridge or Chatwin instead of going to Baldonale or Peace River or something like that.
Yeah, so extracurricular impact. I don't think that Dawson shut down outside of user groups, did they?
It didn't initially, and it caused a lot of problems.
Yeah.
And then they adjusted, and so it's been back and forth.
Been back and forth, okay. And I never really did know. But onboarding. Onboarding all those groups that used to use schools, like, and how people are going to do that might be something. Opening schools to more public use again, if people had thought about that.
Yeah.
And if anybody else thinks of anything else, fire it, and what I'll do is send those as potential topics, get feedback from their boards. Is there any particular day of the week, if we were to do it in an afternoon or an early evening, that works better for people?
Mondays are probably everybody's board meeting. They're still.
I don't know. That's kind of interesting. I actually don't know.
I'll be due next question.
That would be convenient if they tacked onto our committee the whole meeting Monday, but they probably, I don't know if they do board meetings those days too.
Well, we get, and I mean, lots of people have held Monday open, so I could offer up Mondays.
Yeah, like June 7th, they have committee the whole, so whether it would be before or after, I don't know.
I think they do this once.
Pardon?
I'm just looking quickly, and it looks like Wednesdays.
Okay.
Dawson?
They might come together.
They might, they might come together on another day. Thanks, Leah. The other group that I reached out to after our conversation is, I did reach out to Northern Legislature. And he was going to get back with the Board of Governors and see if they wanted to proceed with the meeting.
Tyler?
Pardon?
Who was it that you reached out to?
The concept of setting up that meeting had been delegated to Donald Famesian.
Okay.
And so he was going to reach back to, back to the board and come back to me. Initially, last year, I had reached out to Tyler, and it got put to him. And so when I wanted to reach out again, I reached back to him.
Yeah.
Now, all of their stuff takes place on a Wednesday. And he said, "Okay, so if your meetings are on Wednesday, maybe we could just have a joint time, and it could be part of our joint meeting." But no, our meetings aren't on Wednesday. So, and I, I will reach out to Erin, because Erin really felt there were probably some agenda topics that were important. And that would probably be something important for Stephen to get some feedback from other district staff that do a lot of liaison with the college on, to see what they think is important to review. And again, I think initially, what the person that I was corresponding with was really looking for was almost like you wanted to do a supper together or a meeting greet, more of a social thing, just so we knew each other's words. But I think there's, since that point in time, there's been COVID. But there's also been some things that have come up that people are aware of that suggest there might actually be some agenda items we need to talk about. Okay? All right, moving on to 8.0, approval of the excerpts of the regular board meeting of May the 8th, page 12 in your package.
8.0?
6.0.
Sorry, 6.0, sorry. 6.0, not 8. Can I please get a mover and a seconder? Moved by Nicole, seconded by Bill. Any errors or omissions? All in favor? Thank you. 7.0 announcements and reminders. Is there any additions or exchanges to this? We put recognition of retirees and long service employees through alternate forms on there, just so that there is a record that that's what we're doing. I'm not sure if anybody has anything else that they would like to add.
Because the audit committee will just have to. Audit committee, because they don't have a date, but it will be somewhere in there.
So right now, once you've managed to connect with the auditors and gotten some feedback, okay? Yeah, that's, so, we'll put down audit committee to be determined. But it is important. And we did add some policy committee meetings too, didn't we? Was there one in June, but it's on there, isn't it?
All right, there is one on the 7th.
Yeah, there is a policy committee meeting on the 7th. So we should probably add that. Sorry, Leah, I didn't think about that the other day. All right. No further additions. We'll move on to 8.0, senior staff reports, and we'll start with the superintendent's report, which is page 13 in your package.
Just a quick point of order, Leah, the out of district field trip requested by Mr. Campbell, is that part of the superintendent's report? I'll make it part of that? Okay. All right.
But we should probably pull out our.
It is going to be pulled out, yeah.
Okay.
So, um, looking at the superintendent's report on page 13. Items one and two are information items, and trustees have that to look through. Item number three will have to be pulled out as a motion. It's to approve a change of post responsibility at Burt Bowes School. Item four will have to be pulled out as a separate motion, to accept the charges as presented from schools. And what we'll call item five is approval of an out of district field trip presented by Mr. Campbell for a day trip to Pinus Falls. And then the last item is my regular superintendent's report, which I will do now. And, perfect, if you don't mind, we can move that over there. Okay, thanks. Just briefly here then, under intellectual development for our framework. School District 60 is working with the ministry on the pilot for the K-5 proficiency benchmarks for the performance standards. So that work continues, and we're connecting with the ministry. And Charmaine Cratchen, our principal learning services, is leading that project. Second item there, learning support model. Just a bit of a refresher for trustees. This is sort of the model we're using for allocations to make sure they're aligned with the school goals, their framework goals. And there's a document for your information that is attached in terms of some of the criteria we talk about with our school leadership. And briefly, I wanted to, I know it's hard to see. I wonder if I can raise that figure. Maybe not. There's a circle there. At the very top is a picture of a teacher with some kids. And so just a reminder on this model, this is not a generic model with a set allocation every year, but it's rather a responsive model based on the strengths and challenges of a group of students with their teacher. Therefore, the group dynamic includes both the students and the adults that collectively will respond in different ways to interventions. The next hard-to-see icon is, represents a class review. One of the most powerful processes we have to inform our practice and decisions is the class review. Like a puzzle piece assembled with other class review pieces, an image emerges for your school that informs the teacher, school-based team, and your framework. The next icon of an achievement dashboard. A key component of knowing this particular group as well as your school profile is knowing the learning evidence that is broken down and articulated in ways that are informative, compelling, and strategic. Your achievement dashboard is your third point that grounds your conversation and plans and points them in the right direction. The bottom image is an image of the staff. All staff need to be involved to some degree in your school improvement story. Planning day is a key component of this, but people are finding ways to keep the discussion and collective mission going through staff meetings and collaboration, as well as through asynchronous tools such as shared data walls, action research projects, and their own ProD. The next image is of our framework. Your fessel is the document and process that captures your compelling learning evidence and provides a subsequent action plan that will have the most impact for those areas of need. This plan has specific objectives, measurements, roles, timelines, and resource allocations. In essence, it is your learning support model action plan. The next one is a picture of a school-based team. The school administration are the decision-makers, but key decisions are best made in a multilateral way. The dynamic nature of students and of the overall rhythm of a school demands a dynamic team that is responsive and adaptive to changing needs. In order to support the classroom, the school-based team has a true learning leadership role. It is driven by the third data point and is made aware of the resources available in the learning support fund. And finally, the dollar sign represents the learning fund. The learning support fund is an above-board fund with a transparent allocation process. The key elements noted above, along with many others that you use, inform the allocations of your learning support fund. There will never be enough to do everything. What does the learning evidence tell you, and what will have the most impact? The next item is an example of teacher collaboration using their learning support fund at Charlie Lake Elementary School. Teachers got together, they used some collaboration time, and they presented to their staff on the different learning literacy and literacy initiatives that are going on there. It was very successful. It was very successful. Moving on to human and social development, Robert Ogilvy was profiled in the news by the Dalai Lama Center. And if you click on the image, it takes you to that news article, which outlines some of the steps and programs that Robert Ogilvy has done over the last couple of years in terms of their heart and mind initiative. Under skill development, Chair Gilbert mentioned the Spark Conference. And we did have, in fact, a number of students involved in that. So that is mentioned here in this career and international update, as well as some other items. I did want to profile the second piece. On May twentieth, seven to eight PM, our own Principal Brian Campbell will be a co-host for this online webinar. And they're going to be having some pure exploration conversations focused on the north. And we're delighted to have Brian as part of that. So you can read a bit more about it, and please feel free to share this information with your colleagues. Under operations, there's just the workforce report that's already attached. Truth and reconciliation, I've included background year eleven on self-government, please have a read on that one. Also for that, I was forwarded some information in the picture by Acting Principal Pat Lang. And one of the classes out of Valdonal, I did a project around the murder of a missing Indigenous woman. It's called the Red Dress Project, and they have a lovely picture there of it. And it was a neat process, we're all involved. Finally, trustees can take a look at some of the fun pictures and activities around the district in the T3 section. This one here profiles Robert Ogilvy. And the second one is really neat, it's actually a PowerPoint presentation, please click on it and download it. And I'll just give a quick example from it. See if PowerPoint comes up. And I believe trustees had noticed in the past some of the things like the student profile and the teacher profile. And so those items are included in here. And lots of, lots of examples of experiential learning and fun activities happening at Burpost. That is my report, and I respectfully submit it.
Could I please have, we will have some recommendations to pull out. But I'd also like to go through all areas of the report and make sure that we're answering any questions anyone has. So we will accept his, Stephen's report, then go back and pull those motions out. So can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by David, seconded by Nicole. All right. Discussion, so the first item is the human resources summary with tips for teachers. And I think we have to take Kathy Keifer off because I'm not sure that she's actually made up her mind, so we don't want to take that off.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's been a bit of a changing thing. And then if we look at the workforce report, Stephen has been sharing those with us. How are you using those as a staff? Are they at all helpful for you, or do you look at them and go, oh, so that's where we came from?
Right now, it's a very high-level perspective piece of information for us that so far has indicated we're below average in terms of the number of illnesses and others. Beyond that, that's about it for now.
All right. Post of responsibility. We'll go through that next. Can I please have a motion to approve the changes in the post of responsibility as presented at Burpost? Lewis made that motion, seconded by Madeline. All in favor? School charges, you have an extensive package in front of you. And one of our requests last year was some uniformity in the presentation of information around this, and it looks like that has occurred, so thank you to the board for showing us. Are there any questions of Stephen related to charges? Understanding that as you'll see on most of them, there is a concept that if hardship is an issue, things are taken care of?
Move over here.
Pardon, Nicole?
Just wondering, do you ever, because they're substantially different at each school. Do you get a lot of, do you get much parents saying, hey, at Duncan Crown, they're paying thirty, and I just got one fifteen at Robert Ogilvy? Like, do you get much of that?
No.
No, okay.
I don't think every school does it the same way. Like, it can be very different depending on when some people look at their classroom fees. They know that they're going to do this many construction projects from that.
Yeah, and I think it's great that school makes it work for them, I just was wondering.
That's a good question.
It is a good question, it's always, if parents moving from school to school each year, you might get them a A.
But yeah, it's working, it's working.
Well, the goal is to make them more equal. All right, but this year, because we hired a purchaser, right? But purchaser got redirected because of COVID. But I mean, if the purchaser, the theory is we could buy bulk and everything and divide it amongst the schools. All right, so I mean.
But that would really only work for the cost charge of school supplies, but you know, some schools charge bussing, some don't. Some charge field trips, some have different cultural fees, so the purchase share is not going to, yeah, have much of an impact on these school charges, except for the supplies, I guess. If schools have saved substantially on supplies, they could reduce, but those agendas are always going to be ten dollars.
As paranoid as you may.
Okay.
Get it done.
Any other questions related to these? So could I have a motion to accept the school charges as presented? Moved by David, seconded by Bill, all in question, all in favor? And we have, need a motion to approve the international education risk in Canusa Falls, it's in your package. It is not a high-risk field trip, there is an adequate level of supervision and all those kinds of things. Moved by David, seconded by Bill. Sorry, Nicole, I have a question. All in favor? All right, can you go to the top of your report, please, Stephen? So at some point, will you, we've voted it right back to the top, the performance runners that we're working on. Can we get some feedback out of committee and the whole meeting about what they're looking like and what your partners have done on that?
I don't think by June seventh.
No, not by June the seventh, but.
Oh, yeah, so in the, in the fall, perhaps, absolutely.
Yeah. Because I know that there's some people that have been working on it.
You bet.
And the graphic for the learning support model.
I will send her out.
Did you send that? Because I think it's a really important graphic for us to.
And I'll send my notes too.
Okay, that would be great.
Want to lighten it up, Stephen?
Yeah.
My wife took two of the foreign exchange students for a drive on a weekend. And it's probably going to be the same thing going Tumblr. A bunch of them, their goal is to see a bear.
Oh, I bet.
They want so bad to see it. They went for a second drive on Saturday, just looking for a bear.
Did they see one?
Just go down to the Cooley's, you're in the ditches.
Come out dark, please.
Yep, they really want to see a bear.
Every field.
So Canusa Falls.
Not that close.
Canusa Falls, they can see a bear.
I'll just slowly go through each area in case people.
Is there any other questions related to these areas? I think one of the things out of our earlier in-camera agenda items is sometimes we don't always ask some questions at a point in time, but asking those questions is important to have embedded in minutes. I'm trying to ask more questions. I'm excited about that work BC webinar, because it's a really good tool that lists like a hundred and twenty careers or something.
Yeah.
So.
What does this, do that?
I'm looking forward to getting back to what we can do, like our project heavy duty and that kind of stuff like that.
Us too.
Well, we've done the discussions and questions, so all in favor on Stephen's report? Do that, and we pulled the motions up and did those. So we're looking at eight point two now, the Secretary Treasurer's report.
Sorry to interrupt here, this point of order for my report, sorry, Leah.
Did you go into the guiding principles for?
It was just attached as an information item. Yeah, yeah, no problem, thank you.
I missed his hand, that was terrible. All right, page number, Secretary Treasurer's report.
Yeah, the annual facility grant by law was originally, I will present this meeting for approval, but we have a new tool, capital planning tool. So it is not available to us at this time to even submit anything. So we are a little, maybe a little apprehensive at this point, but we do have it ready to go if we need to send it in, in an Excel document. So we're trying to do right by the ministry, so we're trying to learn that new program and hopefully we will have it here in time for the July board meeting to pass one way or another.
Not July, June.
June, June. Oh, you were, oh, you were listening, Helen, thank you.
You're throwing that one out there just to see.
That was my, my error completely.
I'm laughing. I heard the better sense humor.
No, thank you, thank you. So, yeah, we'll have that for the next board meeting. Administrative office closure is attached, if anyone has any questions on that.
I think it's a really important thing to have over at this time because people forget. Thank you very much for that.
Well, Leah keeps me honest. And the annual budget consultation update, just kind of overview on how it went. The timeline originally had us passing the budget today. We aren't there yet, but we will be there for the June meeting. The various meetings, the public meeting, I, I did not attend, but I understand you had one person. But Stephen said that they were asked a lot of questions, so it's some good introduction. So we sent out specific invites to some of our partners, Doig River, Blueberry, and Halfway for the public meeting. I don't think anyone came, so we just need to revisit how our invitations are going out, when they're going out in the future. So still a little bit of work to be done, but I think for a first go, it was. Operations meeting, we set people up with a budget email, so I had some feedback there. I still did meet one-on-one with the different department leads. So Careers International, Curriculum, ELL, Learning Services, and Indigenous Education. DTLM, I did, I got good feedback from some AOs, they enjoyed the presentation. And I got some emails as well for the, from them. Just kind of, it was actually really good explaining how their school works, what they'd like to see, where they have some struggles, so it was all, the couple I got was good, good dialogue, so. And then we did put out the survey, which at this point, when I looked earlier today, we had nine responses. So, so we need to.
Push that again somehow?
What survey is that?
The budget survey.
And that's going to staff?
Public.
Public.
Oh, public. That's a new process that we?
I think Stephen started it last year because of COVID, and then we continued it this year, just to, because I think last year we had ninety-three responses, it was quite.
Just a quick point of order, so you'll go through all of this first, and then maybe questions on each of these items after. That's okay, just so we stick to the same process.
So we had, so there is some, some work to be done about maybe more better communication, sending out reminders and touching base around public meetings and things like that. But I think we have the, the presentation piece down now, so we just can adjust it and add to it moving forward. Good process.
Your human resources report?
Human, sorry, I was waiting for questions. Human Resources Support Staff, summary is attached as presented.
So could I have a mover and a seconder for annual support? Moved by Nicole, seconded by Madeline. All right, and I don't think there's any items to be pulled out for motion, but let's go through and see, any questions related to annual facilities stuff by law update? How big a change in the format is this?
It's a change in the reporting, so historically, we had a spreadsheet that we would send in to them. And now they would like everything put into, it's a program essentially, tracking our AFG, tracking our capital projects, trapping, tracking five-year plans. And so we've had training on it, but it's not, there's only a sandbox to play in, so we still can't get in and put the information in, so.
You think once it's working, do you feel, just from maybe seeing the previous one, it's going to be actually an actual improvement, or is it just more work?
Good question.
Be positive.
Yeah, I think it will, it will provide quite a bit more information, we'll be able, I think it's going to, for our COA projects like the HVACs and the different projects that we take on that are little large outside of the AFG, I think those will be good tools, because we can put the information in, we can see the draws, so they can tell where we're at along the way. And we can compare it in real time to what we've spent, so I think it will be. It's just the, the sandbox, when you go there to look at it, it's not super meaningful. They're not your numbers, they're not your projects, it's just kind of a, I think they're buffering us until they can roll out the real one. And hopefully sooner rather than later, so.
Well, and I think one of the asks from the board was at some point, we have something that shows what stage a building is at in terms of its life cycle and what repairs have been done and some timelines. So that may be something that if you're having to do it, would answer some of those questions that we have, so.
My understanding is that it is going to be as large a tool or smaller tool as we, we make it. I believe it, it will have those options.
So annual budget consultation update, Nicole?
So, the facilities grant probably, and I apologize if I missed in the meeting, I missed, but off, this is where, these are the things we apply for to pay for things like HVACs and new roofs and painting outside schools, right?
No, the AFG is kind of money that's, it comes in at around one point four million every year, and we apply specific projects to it that we would like to see done in the next year. So we submit our plan on how we're going to spend this, this amount. It's, I, it's fairly standard every year.
Right, so when did we put in our plan?
We haven't put it in.
Oh, that's what we're needing.
Yes.
Okay, because that's what I feel like I'm missing. Chad sometimes comes or.
Yep.
And says, you know, Ellen Holland, and this is where Ellen Holland got painted last year, Taylor got painted.
It is that, yeah.
So we don't know what we're asking for yet. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, those, those are certificates of approval, so those are a bit larger projects in scope than, than this. This is kind of, I can read a few items off here.
Yeah, just so I can remember what.
So we have door replacements on here, sidewalk, siding and sidewalks at Buick. Window replacements, more door replacement, seems to be some gym floor replacements. This one is quite a large, it's a paving of a parking lot, so these are items. Historically, we haven't always achieved everything on the AFG. So you might have heard about Robert Ogilvy's parking lot last year, and it's on there again this year. So Chad and I are going to work together to try to ensure that the items do get cleared. So Chad and I are going to work together to try to ensure that the items do get cleared off the list.
So what is the, I guess I'm asking, what is the process to say Buick needed new doors? Like, am I, do you know what I mean? Like, what's the process?
Yeah, right, I, I guess I.
Come forward and say, this is the priority for maintenance, and we just?
Yeah, Chad and Radu go and look, inspect the sites. And for example, Bert Ambrose, he has door replacements there. Those are original to the school, I guess.
Okay.
So that's how he comes up with.
So then when it comes to us in this grant by law update, we'll say yes. Like, well, we have some, yeah, but we'll have some information on, on why we're doing Bert Ambrose doors compared to. Right?
We only want three doors.
I just, I'm missing something, or I feel like, I, I, I'm sure we did the same last year, I just, I just want to make sure I.
You, you used the magic word Bert Ambrose. We did have a presentation from the city and agreed to some things there. And one of the things we talked about was trying to figure out if Ambrose Parking Lot could be paved at the same time they were doing that extension. And we asked that whatever changes came out of that, would, somebody would come back to us and let us know what we've decided to do.
Okay.
Doing half of it, not the other half, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think that might have been before your time, but.
I'd like me to catch up for you.
You're still in the back office.
With COVID, we haven't been able to tour the schools, but it's on my thing, it's on my list. I keep these things that we said we were going to do. So at one point, this was over a year ago, we said that Chad was going to take us, like, tour us through the district and show us the things that needed to get done. Like, I trust when Chad says, these doors need to be done before this school's doors, but you'll get a call from the other principal saying, you know, my doors need to be done. So I just need to understand what the process is and what, and just make sure there is one, and it's not just, I don't know, Chad.
I, I understand what you're saying. We can, um.
Yeah, just so we, it's kind of like what you said, yeah, and kind of like what you said, we did want to get, obviously COVID and everything slowed down, but a list of where we're at. So not just for this year, but when do we think Bert Ambrose Parking Lot?
Well, and we were.
Sort of like a five-year plan.
And we were talking about like the Facilities Condition Index. I know that there's not necessarily used all the time in our district, but there's some things that are listed as must-dos by a certain date. Well, what are the must-dos for this building? And is what we're putting in the annual facilities stuff matching up with some of those other things?
Because some stuff goes out the window with old staff and old board, right? Like, so the old board knows that Central got a huge rehab and actually is doing really well. Whereas the public and the new board thinks that Central's the oldest school in the district and must go. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So we, I'm sure that's polished in minutes and all that, but.
No, those are good, good points. We are hoping to come up with a plan with touching base with AOs that we can present to you, and then we can check things off as they're done. At this point, this AFG document does, it's really based on Radu and Chad going through and kind of allocating the funds. If something pops up that really needs to be done quickly, something does fall by the wayside and they, they take care of that, so.
And I understand we trust you, because they, they're, obviously they have no ulterior motive in doing one over the other.
Right.
To the best of the district, get the worst stuff fixed. Right, okay.
Did that answer that?
Yeah.
Annual Budget Consultation Update. I guess what could we do to try and drive those surveys up? Is it worth sending it to DPAC again and saying, our survey return rate is low, could you please make sure that you get this out to PAP, you know, send it out to PAP.
We did, we did do that. We sent it out and they sent it out to their memberships or other people. I'm not too sure what we have, maybe just more advertising, I.
I don't know, because on one of the PAP meetings, I think it was Ann Roberts Young, that PAP chair hadn't seen the survey, and she said she'd send it out, but she didn't have it from DPAC, she didn't think. Bill?
Ask whoever is taking care of the schools, like Facebook, to post it on there.
We, we could definitely, it's not too late, we could definitely send that out, so.
Trustees could do it and double our numbers.
Thank you, I would appreciate that.
And any questions related to the Human Resources Support Staff summary? All in favor of Emily's report? Moving on to nine point O, reports of the regular committee of the whole meeting, May the third, which is page fifteen to seventeen, your agenda package. A mover and a seconder, please?
I wasn't there.
No, I'm just doing the look, Madeline and Bill, thanks. I was doing the scan, the teacher scan, evil eye teacher scan. All right, any errors or omissions in those minutes? All in favor? Carrie. Businesses arising from those minutes. So the first piece of business arising is the Board of Trustees' meeting schedule that was attached. We were going to take it away and have a bigger look at it and see if this is good to go. Recognizing somebody reminded me, because I panicked, because I looked at the number of committee of the whole meetings and thought, we'll never get through all the frameworks, and I had to remember we added some frameworks. We can add as needed for that kind of thing, so. Any feedback on the schedule?
Question here. I'm just forgetting, but it says, May twenty-fifth date was chosen for May board meeting? Is that just our next meeting, is that in there?
No, no, that's for next year, because.
Oh, well, twenty-one.
It's all next year. It's all next year.
Was that supposed to say April? I think so, because the twenty-fifth of May next year is a Wednesday.
Yeah, it's, it's the red part, I put, instead of putting April twenty-fifth, it's May. I think it's a Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, because of the long weekend, isn't it?
Yeah, we had to move, no, it was in April that we were moving it around, and then it is that one, one meeting in May is a Tuesday, because the Monday is Victoria Day.
Right, so it'd be May twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
It's a Tuesday of next year, twenty-twenty-two, was that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, May twenty-fourth?
Yeah, May twenty-fourth is a Tuesday. And then we decided to go with the April twenty-fifth, I believe, at the last meeting.
So like instead of for, for Easter Monday?
Monday, that's right.
Okay. I missed this meeting, but hadn't we discussed just moving meetings from Monday to Tuesday when there's been a long weekend?
We did, but then we also discussed there was the problem with the AGM. Well, people hadn't, and so it was a toss-up. Do we move it to a Tuesday? And that threw people off. And it was, what could we live with more? And it was thought that if we knew that we were going to have a regular board meeting after the AGM, then we just made sure we had a forum and everybody back.
So these minutes just need to say April twenty-fifth and May twenty-fourth.
Probably, yeah, I should say, April twenty-fifth date was chosen for the April board meeting. I just put the wrong line.
And I said I would bring a letter back to you, a draft of a letter for your feedback. Every time I read it, I see another editing issue. But the concept was, this was an extension of the NIB report because DCA had asked districts to give them some feedback as to whether they were asked for next year's special round of full recovery. So are there any additional points people would like to see added? Or any context in this letter that I don't have accurate? I'm open to feedback. I think you covered it. All right. We'll move on to nine point three, Policy Committees, meeting of May the third. So Aaron is not here, so hopefully I can do this faster. So if we look at the Public Interest Disclosure Act that is attached, this is a new policy that we are required to have in place by December. And we're bringing it forward for notice of motion at the May seventeenth meeting. And so with the notice of motion, we only need a mover, we don't need a seconder. So could I have someone move that we do forward the Public Interest Disclosure Act for notice of motion? Moved by David? All right, so that is going forward for notice of motion.
Well, that's okay, though, so we can go back to the top of the list after that, I guess. It's just that A is Policy one zero zero eight.
Okay, I was just going through the policy committee notes, okay, sorry. Doesn't matter, sorry Leah.
But that's now done, though, so.
Yeah, so that one's done. So let's go with trustee indemnity, and we're at the stage where we're looking for a seconder for that. Seconded by Madeline. And that means that that one is adopted as presented. Okay, one, one zero zero eight, I need Aaron here to keep me on track. All right, so the bylaw.
My apologies, Chair.
It's okay.
But I think, so we have a seconder.
Yeah.
And then you would sort of call it to question.
Okay.
Staff can advise you that we've had no feedback on Policy one zero zero eight.
All right.
And once you call it to question, then, then you ask for it to be passed.
All right, sorry. So calling that to question, now we have a mover or a seconder, all in favor? All right, so it's passed, any feedback? No. All right, moving on to, this is the one that I was worried about.
Yeah.
So we have the organizational bylaw for the board, and a mover on that was done. And we will need a seconder. And. So can I have a seconder on this? Seconded by Nicole. So in accordance with section sixty-eight point four of the School Act, all three readings of the bylaws of one ninety, organization of the board will be given at this meeting. So can I have it? All in favor of that? All right, so that's done. Now, the other thing that I needed clarified, because I really didn't think you wanted to listen to me and read ten pages in my teacher's voice, and Stephen did check this out. Because the bylaw was circulated as part of your meet-minute packages and you had it in advance, it may, I don't have to read the whole thing, because you're in possession of it. And we can go through each of the three readings where I look at the title of the bylaw and a summary of its content. So if we look at the bylaw, so I'm looking for the first reading of bylaw one ninety, the organization of the board, which goes through what our inaugural meeting will look like. It then moves on to chairperson and presiding officers, what we would do. It goes through the flow of the meetings with general information, regular meetings, special meetings, and then new in red was the whole section on electronic meeting expectations. Then what would happen in a closed session, rules of order, reconsideration of a motion, if we needed to do that, committees, bylaws and resolutions, and procedures for notices of motion. So could I please have a mover and a seconder for the conclusion of that bylaw? Moved by Madeline, seconded by Nicole. Is that right?
I'm not sure if we need a mover and a seconder. I think you just then proceed to the second and third readings.
Okay, well, it says.
My apologies, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. That's what I thought.
Am I, am I wrong, Leah?
We've always had a first and seconder for every reading.
Okay, stick with the process, my apologies, I think that.
That's okay, we have a mover and a seconder, accepted, the first reading, please, show of hands. It is accepted. We're going to move on to the second and third reading, and I'm not quite sure. It says I get to do it in a shorter form than that, but. We'll do it the same way, bylaw number, this is a motion to accept bylaw, the changes to bylaw number one dash ninety, a bylaw to provide for the organization of the board under these particular headings of inaugural meetings, chairperson and presiding officers, meeting and general information, regular meetings, special meetings, electronic meeting expectations, things that are dealt with in a closed session, rules of order, motions, reconsideration, committees, and procedures for notice of motion. Can I have a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Bill, seconded by David. All right, and then we'll move on to the third reading of the bylaw. And that is that we're bringing forward bylaw number one ninety, a bylaw to provide for the organization of the board. Inaugural meetings are covered, chairperson and presiding officers duties are covered, general information for meetings is covered, regular meetings, what's entailed, special meetings, electronic meeting expectations, closed sessions, rules of order, reconsideration, committees, bylaws and resolutions, and procedures for notice of motion. Can I please have a mover and a seconder for the third reading? Moved by Bill, seconded by David, all in favor. Leah, the only thing I didn't do that I think I was supposed to do was the short form, but that was kind of embedded in what we do. I think we're okay. All right. Moving on to policy number two thousand and three, student placement kindergarten to grade seven. It is the policy committee's concept that this motion, this particular policy is not needed, so they're putting it forward for deletion. Could I please have a mover for that? We didn't do this last time, did we?
We didn't have a mover on it already, right?
It doesn't have a mover on it.
You just put it for a notice of motion, which.
It doesn't have a mover on it, which is what I thought.
Policy two thousand and three?
It doesn't have a mover on it, which is why.
We did, though. Yeah. I might not have put it on there, I'm new to doing that, so I might have left it off, sorry.
Okay. Okay, so I just need a seconder, it's in the minute somewhere.
I believe I, I moved that, so I won't second it, but if you want to put me as the mover from the other meeting.
Okay, seconder, please? Yeah. All in favor of deleting this policy? All right.
Aaron that moved it.
Oh, you have that? Oh, you have that? You keep minutes, it's in the minute.
Oh, it's in, okay, so I might just try to take credit for something.
Hey, I can put it on.
And we've undone item, the next one, which is the Policy Disclosure, or the Public Interest Disclosure Act. We've done that. We're ahead on something. Looking then at the policy on School Board Meeting Delegation. And remembering his work and the need to do it, you know, the, um, some things that were going on, so we were cleared up when and how people become employees. I have a mover out from last time?
I think it's put the bond there last time.
Notice of motion?
It's notice of motion, okay. All right, so this is going out for notice of motion, so I do, I need somebody to move that go up for notice of motion. Move by David?
So just questions to that one, because I was not at the policy committee meeting.
Yeah.
Were there any changes down to this, or is this full?
This is, this is quite new. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, it was, we looked at a number of different examples. So included in your package is not only the policy that reflects sort of protecting the district and making sure that the process was followed well, we revamped the form itself, that the public needs to fill out to follow the policy properly, and we were explicit about some things that would not be accepted for delegations.
Some of this came out of some of our earlier work when we were looking at Section 11. One wasn't, wasn't a delegation, so...
Oh, it's a good document that was designed, because there's nothing in red, so it's not. I couldn't really see where it was.
Yeah, no, we created this.
That's why I was asking.
You, you're right, got it.
All right. I'm getting, I know what's going on. I got policy committee and board meeting blurred in my head, and I forget that there are two different entities at the moment. All right, policy number 1001, School Board Duties and Authority. We are making, looking for someone to move that we delete this policy, and it would be at the, sorry, I thought I turned that off. It would be at the notice of motion stage for this one, I believe? Yeah.
I'll move that.
Move by Nicole. All right, and we don't have to accept it, because we're just looking for a mover on it. All right, and policy 1002 is board member authority. And again, this is a policy that we're looking to delete, because it ends up covered off in other things and really doesn't mean anything at this point in time.
And we'll be bringing forward a, a proper policy, terms of a policy.
Move by Bill. Thanks, David. And...
There you go.
That's it. Other reports, PCOSA, we know that Erin doesn't have anything. Correspondence, assessment related to app, assessment advocacy. There's a letter attached to your package that is in draft form that I was going to send out as a follow-up to our resolution that we put forward at the AGM around improving, or decrease, not improving, decreasing assessment wait times. So is there any other thoughts that people want to add to this, or is it good to look at sending? I specifically wondered about who we see CEP to, looking for feedback.
Created acceptable time delay. What would be, I don't expect.
I honestly-
I don't expect two weeks, okay? But two years is too much.
Make a target, yeah.
So three months, that would be an acceptable, you know, goal?
I honestly don't know, because I, I have never existed in the system where there have been these huge wait times. But if I think about the anxiety for a parent that has just had somebody suggest your, your child has any kind of concern, you want those answers now. And in terms of educational programming and planning, there's sort of three reporting cycles in a year. If it came up in September, it would be nice to have that answer by the next reporting cycle.
1701 assessments is, there's two reporting periods, there's September and there's February in terms of specialized cases in coding. Yeah, I mean, certainly, you're, it's a good question. I'm not sure off the top of my head in terms of that, that rate mix.
The concept of a target time, I don't-
Just to have a target time.
Better, better than two years is, you know, a year, 10 months. Doesn't really set-
I mean, everything, right now, I think, like I said, in April, even autism has gone to 78.7 weeks. That's over a year, a year and a half, or anything. And that's the provincial average. So you know that there's some people that are getting it done faster, and there's some that are further behind, and our region is further behind.
Yep, five hundred.
And you want to know who would send it to? I mean, it's everywhere. It's from the Department of Education, Department of Health, the Minister, Ministry of Children and Families.
We have them on here.
Have you?
Good one.
Yeah.
It's somebody's child.
Yeah, there's probably somebody else there, but I mean-
It's important.
Do you see the list that you see seeing it to?
No, I don't, up here right now.
Yeah, I just, I, I didn't have all those to begin with, and then I went and put them in, but many heads are better than just one, so...
That was just my thoughts.
Yeah, I don't even know what would be reasonable.
A target?
We should, should I?
Yeah.
Well, maybe what I'll ask you is to talk with Keith and see what they would send.
We, we still can come back relatively quickly with the, an advisable target.
A year is still too long, but anything over a year is when you got to go, whoa.
A year is long, yeah.
So I'm saying a year is too long, because, I mean, being here also, you have to, it's not like you're going there for the day. You know, it's not like you're going to be driving in for the day. So you got to book two or three days off work, take your kid down, you got to fly with them. So there's, you know, 1,500 bucks, whatever, airfare at least, plus hotels, plus whatever. I mean, so, I mean, you just-
The one, the one thing that has happened since we started looking into this is there's now somebody doing private assessments in these schools. Ironically, they used to work for Northern Health in the same, doing the same thing, but now they've gone into private practice. But the really nice thing is their places are quite reasonable, and it's Prince George and it's not Vancouver, so that, for somebody that has the means to seek a private, private assessment, is better than what it's been before. But what's even happened with some of the private assessments through COVID, there's a backlog there. So even if you give somebody a chunk of change to go get an assessment done, the whole thing is back. All right, anything else? That gives me the feedback.
Chair, just a quick, sorry. Just a quick point of order. Trustee Madeline had asked about policy, the delegations. I misspoke. It was put forward for review.
Okay.
I think I said it was new. It's not new. We revised it so that it was in line with proper protocols based on the news we did of policies around the province, and then revamped our group form to align with it. Sorry about that.
I was just wondering, I don't know, we're in a constraint, keeping things tight, but to get someone here to subsid, you know, through subsidy, give them some help out a little bit. You know, the parents come to the table with a bunch, we'll help out a little bit, just, just to, and to really focus on getting someone here, not Prince George, not Vancouver, here, looking after them. They can fly and fly whatever they want.
Well, then the CDC just did bring in a team, and we had three kids assessed through the school district with that team, but that was what they funded through United Women. I'm supposed to bring that team into town. So, yeah, I know.
So, one other thing I was thinking, oh, so you have Indigenous health here, but to me, that's always a really great avenue. I don't know if there's any statistics about how many of our coding children are Indigenous, but they just have access to funding and grant-
Way more than we have.
That we don't know about, so, yeah, I don't know. Yeah.
I didn't have MCFD, and that's important, too.
Thank you.
Okay, um, is there any other unfinished business? New business. We didn't add any. And we don't, I don't think Michelle's on.
She, you know, Leah said that she wasn't able to take the, no, she didn't have a report.
No report. So, I don't think we had any interim motions that we have to then go to implementation. So we're looking at a motion to adjourn them. Move by David, move by Bill, and there's no questions by the public, from the public, so we can ask that important question, all in favor of adjournment. We're done.
Thank you.